Good morning, everyone. I would like to call our meeting to order. The regular meeting for the Leeward Planning Commission will now come to order. Today is Thursday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is nine thirty-one A.M. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for coming and taking the time to come to the Leeward Planning Commission. Please turn off or silence your cell phones. Public restrooms and drinking fountains are available outside the entrance doors to our right, to your left. If there is anyone here in person who would like to testify, please fill out the yellow signup form at the staff table. Also, if you have any written testimony that has not been sent in early, you may submit it to staff now. At this time, I want to introduce our commissioners and a special welcome to our two brand-new commissioners. Commissioner Alexandra Lexi Ayers. And also our another, the other new commissioner Rebecca Cavehi Inaba. So, welcome. Also, I would like to introduce you to our vice chair Donna Kiniku Nobori Kawa.
Aloha.
Also Commissioner Clemente CJ Kanua.
Aloha, good morning.
Commissioner Armando Rodriguez.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Michael Dela Cruz is excused. And my name is Dean Al, and I am chair of this commission, and we have quorum to hold this meeting. Also present are Deputy Corporation Counselor Susana Tia Pula as attorney for the commission and is present to advise a commission on legal matters.
Aloha.
And Planning Director Jeff Daro is present to advise a commission on planning matters should they have any questions. Commissioners, please confirm that you have had an opportunity to review the materials related to the agenda items today being reviewed.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. I note that each commissioner has verified, has verbally confirmed having had an opportunity to review materials related to the agenda item by reviewing today and all submitted testimony, and I also have reviewed all the materials. The minutes, next, I would like to get our approved minutes for the last meeting. The minutes from the February two thousand and twenty-five. Special General Plan Meeting. Also, the minutes from February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, General Plan Special Meeting, including Executive Session Minutes, the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five regular minute meetings, and Exhibits A, B, and C transcripts from April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five have been distributed. Commissioners, are there any corrections? Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
Thank you, Chair Al. On the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes for the special meeting, on page nine, in the bottom half, at the YouTube timestamp four, twelve, thirty-one, I would like to correct Shalon, the spelling of Shalon International to, well, Shalon is spelled C-H-A-L-O-N and not S-H-A-L-O-N. And then on page ten, the bottom half near the YouTube timestamp four, twenty-six, thirty-four, I would like to correct the phrase Kala Field System to Kohala Field System. Thank you.
Okay, do we have those changes? Kelsey, do we get it? Okay.
And I would like to make a motion to approve as amended.
Motion second.
Okay, so motion was made to amend the minutes on February twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five. Motion was made by Vice Chair Nobori Kawa and seconded by Commissioner Kanua. Any discussions? No, if not, we'll just go ahead and take a, we'll go ahead and take a roll call and vote.
Thank you, Chair Al. The motion is to adopt the minutes as amended. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
Aye.
Commissioner Kanua.
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Yes.
Commissioner Inaba. Commissioner Ayers.
Aye.
And Chair Al.
Aye.
The motion passes with five ayes and one excused.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Just to clarify, the excuse was Commissioner Dela Cruz.
Correct. Sorry, just to clarify, five ayes? I can't count this morning, it's six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to take statements from the public. We will, we will now have public testimony, starting with in-person speakers, followed by Zoom participants. Testimony will continue until all are heard. Public comments are welcome on any agenda item or when the item is called. Testifiers in person, please press the microphone button and speak directly and clearly into the microphone so your statements can be recorded. Zoom testifiers, please keep your video off and audio muted until called to speak. This is an in-person meeting and Zoom YouTube are provided as a courtesy. The meeting may continue even if these connections fail. Please keep your testimony respectful and delivered with aloha to me as a chair. Personal attacks and disruptive behavior will not be permitted, and I may pause or end the meeting at any time if necessary to maintain decorum. All public testimony is limited to three minutes. I ask each of you to please respect the time limit so we can hear from men, as many as you as possible. Staff, are there any individuals to provide testimony in person?
Yes, Chair Al, we have one person who would like to testify at the beginning of the agenda. Rebecca Melendez, if you could come forward to the testifier tables, I can swear you in. Please turn on the microphone by pressing the button. Yes, thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the Leeward Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you, you'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Rebecca Melendez, Kailua Kona. So I stand with six hundred and fifty-two people in my petition that's titled "Help Big Island Resources and Infrastructure Stay Safe for All Who Live Here and Visit." So the capacity of this room is two hundred and nine people. Please imagine three of these rooms filled with people who are working right now, who are opposing more developments such as this. Okay. Ali'i Drive, so small, we already have new developments, some that haven't even finished yet. The traffic is enormous on that one-stop sign. I have given you research information such as this by the National Oceanic Administration. Okay. Development negatively impact coral reefs because impacts and land-based sources of pollution include coastal development, this is on the coast, can impede coral growth and reproduce disrupt overall ecological function. Now DAR, they have done a huge research on West Hawaii's coastline. They have declared that turf algae is the dominant source. Turf algae kills coral. Okay? And one of the reasons it is the dominant source is because coastal development. The sedimentation destroys coral, as well as the Hawaiian sea, green sea turtle who is endangered and other species. Here's another article. Environmental evidence coastal development and runoff lead to sedimentation, which directly impacts coral recruitment, growth, mortality, and ecosystem services that coral reefs provide. That's another article. A third article by NOAA, again, one of the most significant threats to reefs is pollution. Land-based runoff and pollution discharges can result from dredging, coastal development. This runoff may contain sediments, nutrients, chemicals, insecticides, oils, and others debris that basically devastate the species. When we are talking about coastal development, it is way more to discuss than inland because of how our coastline is already polluted. It's already being devastated. The dominant species over our corals is turf algae. It's an algae that looks like.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay? So please, look at me and see six hundred and fifty-two people opposing this. Three of these buildings filled, those voices matter, even though they're not sitting here. They matter. They are asking you to stop development, especially coastal development, and start focusing on the resources. We have water restrictions, we have power outages, and we have infrastructure issues.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Ms. Melendez, we've heard you. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for your participation. Ms. Jackson, do we have any more in-person testifiers?
Not at this time, Chair.
Someone just signed in. We'll go ahead and take this person. Good, good timing. Thank you for coming. Ms. Jackson, we'll swear you in.
Ms. Michael, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the Leeward Planning Commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining. Please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Okay, my name is Simi McMichael. I was born in the territory of Hawaii, and I would like to testify on item one and item two. I registered online to do it and went on the same computer and could not log in, so I rushed here. So.
Simi, do me a favor, and when you're finished testifying on item one, let me know when you're transitioning to item two, okay?
Drive cannot stand any more major development. This is within the tsunami evacuation area, and we do not have any evacuation plan. The police chief commented in a formal letter of two thousand and eight, no more development projects unless the Ali'i Highway is up and open to traffic to avoid any bottleneck situation. The Kona Community Development Plan Rule of two thousand and eight were all planned coincided with the Ali'i Highway. So there shouldn't be no more development such as this. So please stop your continued approvals on Ali'i Drive. There is no Ali'i Highway since two thousand and five. It was stopped because of thousands of ivi kupuna buried in archaeology. Cost was fifty million, then in two thousand and twenty-two, it was estimated at two hundred and fifty million. Kwakii Highway years back had an EIS to make four lanes, and it was not met by the deadline. With that being said, there was an alternative, no build. And this EIS was to remove all the standing utility poles on Ali'i Drive and make it underground. The utility lines laying so low, that a few years back, a couple of poles fell on a truck fronting the Kona Reef. It took hours to remove this person trapped in his truck. You can only see the future disaster, tsunami, hurricane, and fire. There is no escape. This development is in the coastal zone management and Rule Number Nine relating to the SMA. This project will have cumulative adverse effect. Water issuance, while we have sufficient water, DWS lacks working wells. On May eighth, County Council Resolution one-three-seven-two-five addressed this concern as to whether to move forward of new developments. Every concern is the emergency preparedness and response plan that should be submitted to the Hawaii County Civil Defense Agency for review and approval prior to the issuance of occupancy. There is no safe evacuation plan as we speak. There's no Ali'i Highway, no four-lane Kwakii Highway to be built within the next ten years. So with that being said, the Kona Community Development Plan of two thousand and eight and revised two thousand and nineteen, no build is the only answer. Please say no.
Aye. I'm done.
Thanks for me. Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Michaels, for your testimony.
I want to go to item two.
Okay, yes, you can go right into item two. Just to clarify, is that your, is that your voice or somebody else's voice? Okay.
I had to make sure I was in your three minutes. When rushing here, I had all my notes and I didn't want to miss the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Jammed in my car and made it here.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you very much.
This study needs to be done, and it's between June first and September fifteenth. SMA permit of two thousand and three stated this development will be oriented for the retired and second home market, estimated of four hundred and fifty thousand to eight hundred and fifty thousand for one-to-three bedroom. What is the estimate now and the next ten years? Zone R M one point five multifamily residential. During two thousand and three, there was twenty-five water units available. How did you manage to obtain seven additional units? We, the residents, are now told to conserve water. We get rolling blackouts often at dinner hours. SB one-three-nine-six, representing the most significant climate change and reduce the risk to protect our aina. It is foundational to our ability to provide safe and secure Hawaii for our children, residents, and visitors, and the environment. Senate President Ron Koichi cited that the importance of tourism to Hawaii economy and the need to protect our island beauty. The greatest thing we have to sell is the people of Hawaii and the aloha spirit. But what makes people so special is the beautiful landscape. And with we stand, it's challenging in finding ways to protect our natural resources. But without the quality of the natural resources, then the beauty of our people will not shine as brightly as it has. And it's imperative that we find ways to ensure that we take care of our natural resources, and there is no easy choices. Here lies a choice. Since two thousand and three, you, the Leeward Planning, may make the right choice for the future of the last place to save. Forget Waikiki, the sadness for aloha ina, but let's celebrate and keep Kona country. Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Michaels, for your testimony. Thank you for your time. So at this point, I don't think we have any more in-person testimony. Okay, do we have anybody, any testifiers on Zoom?
Chair, we have two Zoom testifiers.
Okay, thank you. Is that you on the other side, Ashley?
This is Tracy Camaro.
Okay.
Chair, thank you. Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
The first testifier is Cindy Freitas, and she will be testifying on items one, two, and three, to be followed by Claire Loprenzi, who will be testifying on items one and two. Cindy, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera and, or, and video so that you may be sworn in to testify. Please, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Leeward Planning Commission?
Ayo.
You will have three minutes to testify on each agenda item. If you are testifying on multiple agenda items, please let us know when you finish the first item. This will allow us to reset the timer. If you don't indicate when you're done, your total speaking time will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
Emele komo, ahe mele aloha, nona kupuna, ika'oi hala. Aloha mai, ka'ko. Mahalo, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Cindy Freitas. I'm a native Hawaiian descendant of the native inhabitants prior to seventeen seventy-eight. Born and raised in Hawaii. I'm also a culture practitioner from Aoka to Makai in many different areas. I'm in strong opposition for item number one for the following reason. This parcel lies directly within the special management area. A highly sensitive zone meant a safeguard coastal ecosystem, traditional customary native Hawaiian practices, and public access under HRS two oh five eight dash twenty-six. The proposed action in the SMA must not adversely affect coastal resource and ecosystem, interfere with traditional customary practices, and lead to cumulative environmental impact. This project lies in close proximate, approximately to the shoreline, an area increasingly vulnerable to sea-level high coastal erosion and flooding. Under the Hawaii Sea Level in two thousand and seventeen report and, report and Act sixteen in two thousand and twenty, develop in the SLR dash eight, a sea-level rise exposure area. Zone must access inundation risk and long-term sustainability. The application does not include a true analysis of this risk, nor does it demonstrate appropriate setbacks or coastal hazard mitigation resource. A culture practitioner, I express deeply concern that the applicant has failed to adequately identify or protect cultural resource and customary practices associated with the aina. In the obligation of the Planning Commission under the Kapaa Kai Okaaina Framework to ensure the identity, the scope, traditional customary practices, the impact of proposed actions, and feasible protection measures are adopted to preserve this rights. I have seen no evidence that this project satisfies.
You have thirty seconds left.
Okay, I'm transitioning to item number two. I oppose to revoke permit number four-three-seven. Under the Hawaii Revised Statute two oh five eight dash twenty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, a permit may be revoked only upon a finding that the permit holder has violated its condition or applicable laws. And only after appropriating notice and a hearing, the applicant has provided no evidence of such violation. Thus, the Planning Commission lacks the legal basis to approve this request additionally under Hawaii County SMA rules, Hawaii Administration fifteen dash one-five. Revocation requires a legal basis. Under the Hawaii Revised Statute Rule, a permit can be revoked only upon a finding that the permit holder has violated its condition or applicable laws. Only after appropriating notice and a hearing, the applicant has provided no evidence of such violation. Thus, the Planning Commission lacks the legal basis to approve this request. Additionally, under Administration Rule fifteen dash fifty, Hawaii Revised Statute two zero five eight dash two, parentheses, CC, two thousand and twenty-three, revoking the SMA permit may eliminate, eliminate prior condition meant to safeguard this interest in the Kapaa Kai Aina Ho versus land use commission. The Hawaii Supreme Court held the agency must make findings to ensure protection of conditionally protecting native Hawaiian rights when considering land use decision. In Mahu Iki versus Planning Commission of County of Hawaii, nineteen eighty-two, the court emphasized the importance of due process and public involvement in SMA decision. Any attempt to revoke and potentially reapply for a new entitlement must go through a full environmental review and community participation. Now I'm moving to item number three. The proposed development, well, I'm in opposition to the special management, which is earmarked for Deb David Ibenon. The color might for pronouncing his last name wrong. The proposed development includes substantial ground disturbance on the shoreline parcel, which may have significant impact on natural coastal process and marine ecosystem. The inclusion of a spa, lanai, multistructure improvement increase the risk of runoff and sediment into the near shoreline waters during and after construction. Disruption of natural shoreline process due to hand scraped and impervious surfaces and marine habitats, including coral reef, native limo beds from increased nutrient load of chemical runoff. The parcel is located in a historical and culture-sensitive area of Kailua Kona with known traditional customary practice connections to the shoreline and ocean resources. The area was historical use for native Hawaiian for fishing, salt gathering, and religious ceremony. Also, the Kapaa Kai Aina present, presents set by the Hawaii Supreme Court, without adequate study and protection of native Hawaiian rights and customary access, the project must not proceed. With the proposed construction just steps from the shoreline, this project is highly vulnerable to sea-level rise, storm surge, and coastal erosion. The state of Hawaii and the Hawaii County both recognize the increased threat of climate change, and the shoreline development such as this is inconsistent with future resilience and hazard mitigation goals. The growing trend of luxury, large-scale homes in shoreline areas of Kona contributes to displacement of local families as well as environmental desecration. The proposed residence with multi-bathroom garage and spa facility is not aligned with the local housing needs or sustainable land use planning. Further, there is no evidence that the application, applicant has addressed the cumulative.
You have thirty seconds left.
Okay. Such development on water demand, wastewater disposal, and emergency service access in community character and cultural landscape. Mahalo, have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Freitas, for your testimony. Tracy, can we have the next Zoom testifier, please?
Chair, we have no one else signed up to testify on Zoom at the beginning of the meeting. Thank you.
Yes.
My, my apologies, Mrs. Loprenzi.
I'm Claire.
Claire, hi, hello, yes. So, hi Claire.
Yes.
Um, please, Ms. Loprenzi, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the?
I'm sitting at a very special place.
Ms. Loprenzi?
Always.
I apologize, but you are breaking up on my end.
Okay, can you?
Do.
Let me see if I can stand up down here. Yeah, I swear, I, yeah, I always tell the truth.
You swear, okay. Okay, you.
So I have, I have one and two. I saw I, so when you say that thirty seconds, then I'll go into the next one. Okay?
Okay, please state your name and the town you reside in, and you may begin. Thank you.
I live Honolulu Iki. I, my name is Claire Loprenzi. I'm an indigenous practitioner. I am dual citizen, come from eight generations now of working with what you guys would label as Kapaa Kai analysis. This is really important. As any of you that know me, and probably, you know, a lot of you, I've helped some of your family members birth. It's like, I do a lot of the prenatals and at the beach, as, as would have been done, connecting on all levels. And so I, I look at this first one, and I'm like, where's the EIA? Where's the EIS? Isn't that supposed to support and connect and protect Hawaiians? Is that done? I, I haven't been able to see that that was done. I look at the, the, the connection of, of, especially when you're trying to hold my mai, uh, uh, hanau. You know, everybody thinks it's so. You know, everybody thinks it's so safe to be in the hospital, and that's choi- by choice. But we think it's so safe to to do it at home, and and this is part of it, connecting to this place. Because I help almost all lineal descendants. I mean, I've been doing this for fifty one years. I always say, you know, seventies is young, you know, I got another twenty or thirty. So I I too, you know, need they too and I too. For example, I did a prenatal yesterday, dug a dug a puka in the in the, she's Hawaiian, dug a puka in the in the in the keone and and she put a belly in there. And then I went on and I was able to adjust her hips and her body, talk about her concerns, all from this connection and that and 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 think of what the baby's hearing. Because that's your Evie Kapuna and the Evie Kapuna, the Evie, the health of all of this. So when I when I look at, you know, more things coming in to Ali'i Drive, and I think, please, please, as a as a council, as a leeward council, first of all, if you ever have any conflict of interest of of development and and things, you know, reduce yourselves, you know? If you don't, you know, then then look at look at your families, look at the health of the the nexus, many generations, and look at the health of them now, you know, look at the health of children, you know, diabetes and heart disease, so young, and look at, I look at the health of the the people that are my age, you know, they're dying, you know, they're in bad shape. And this all comes from that Big Mama Ocean, you know, she's the majority of this Papua Hoonua. So so please look at, look at what the they think that the thing is that people are asking you. Swimming pools, you know, it should be.
You have thirty seconds left.
Okay, I'll I'll go into my second one. And my second one is is gonna go mostly on having having worked with uh lineal descendants for all these years. You know, before I even came here thirty years ago, even be- before I even there, I was with Native Americans. And and then I'm with my own my own culture, my own culture is halfway around the world, but I still go there. So so when I look at that, I look at what are the laws that protect us? And so I have concerns about about what the laws are and what's happening. I mean, what's happening as and I would hope that the leeward planning would make sure that the shifty, for example, that that the responses are done within the time limit that they're supposed to. If if I came here twenty minutes, even though I sat here for an hour or forty five minutes waiting for you, that's all good. But if I came late, I'd be I wouldn't be able to get in. So when I looked at, look at at what's happening on that, you know, I I look at high press. Um, what happens when 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 we go through that process? Because I would say the long process, we went through this process with one of the lots down there and which now has a swimming pool and a jacuzzi and all and all, you know, just huge things. Plenty plenty Evie were there, um Evie Kapuna were there. We worked really, really hard just to kind of even understand that process and go through it, all the rates and and rules and everything and 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 then and then they just closed it down. Once we once we opened up what we had to do, once we opened up what we had, then it just shut it down. And it's not because of a lack of, you know, a tech person, um you know, because we, you know, we we're not the young bloods, you know, but but we figure it out, you know, we stay in there because this is so important. So I think as a leeward planning, I'm hoping that you guys also look at the infrastructure that protects us. Or or because, you know, protects in a contested case if that's what's needed, you know, make sure that that even your own board members are not invested in in an Ali'i Drive, you know, and uh and and look at, look at that, uh look at high press, what happened to it? Where was the good faith? I mean, all of a sudden, it just disappeared. And when how long did it take? I think it was like fourteen or fifteen days to get a response from shifty. And there was Evie Kapuna there, there was the Okeha Cave.
You have thirty seconds left.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And so it was a very important, right, the Manahu'ni wall. Another thing I think about is be careful when you, you know, when you give permission to have them fix the things in the water and pour cement in there and change the rocks. Mama Ocean is way stronger than that. And what happened as a surfer, when they go down and uh someone goes down, it gets hurt. You know, so try to try to think in the terms of allowing Papua Hoonua to heal herself. So I could give thanks that all you guys are there.
Your three minutes are finished.
All right, goodbye. Have a great day.
Thank you, Ms. Laquanti, for your testimony.
Yes, thank you, Chair. We now have no one else signed up to testify on Zoom at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. Um, Ms. Jackson?
Chair Au, we have one more person signed up to testify at the beginning of the meeting in person.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, Lamaku Mikahala Roy, if you could come to the testifier table, I can swear you in. Ms. Roy, could you please come to the testifier table so that I may swear you in? Thank you. Please start the three minutes. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth now before the leeward planning commission?
I do.
Thank you. Um, you will have three minutes to testify per item.
Oh, I believe I have not stated my name and address. I am Herro Majesty. Also known as Lamaku Kahu Ahu Enahayau, Mikahala Roy. I live at Kahalu.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Did you swear or affirm to tell the truth before the planning commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we've already started the timer. You have one minute and twenty seconds remaining on the first item. And you've you've signed up to testify on item one, two, and three. I will let you know when you have thirty seconds remaining for each item.
If you will do so with a highlight to me, that'll be sufficient. You don't have to speak it, just go like this, because I have signed up for three. Let's go like this, and I will make it succinct.
I'll let you know when you have thirty seconds.
Because we all know that three minutes per any item. This is a time of pono ole. How can any bit of information sufficient to the subject about Hawaii be done in three minutes? It is pono ole. All of these years when this started is pono ole. So at this time.
Ms. Roy, you have thirty seconds remaining on your first item.
You to leave to signal me that way. Thank you. Good morning. I have signed up to speak on three elements here. And the discussion is so very important that I am glad to have the full nine minutes. I will end up and conclude with Mr. Ivanell's application. Uh, that's closest to home to Kamakuhunu, where Bahuli Iko'a Oka'avaloa is the first temple drum made in association with a restored temple in not only Hawaii, but on earth. It is this temple that means burning altar. It is the temple of Kamehameha the Great. And it is the temple that gives me the lineage of the queen under the king, my father Ali'i Kahu David Kilii Halemaunaroy Jr. And by our lineage, in addition to my dear mother, Ali'i Wahine Verda Le'aloha Vida Roy, I have and hold my lineage, which is uh gives me the full right to express this station. But I'm also Lamaku, and this temple is the first temple restored in Hawaii. And it's uh celebrating, we're celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of that restoration. I have appealed to the state to honor the men who were mostly of the Kona crew, but these called for men from all islands to restore the temple in the mid nineteen seventies. Now, this is the time when, had that restoration not been done, come the year twenty ten, I, who is named Kahu of Ahu Enahayau, am now named Kahunanui. I have begun to hear from the ancestors from this very restored temple. The ancestors of Uivi that go back to the bloodlines of which I am by virtue honored to receive. I receive the messages from them, and they tell me that forty miles of area from Kaloko to Honaunau is now called by Akua Mana Mana Loa to be Kapu. I'm calling it the Kapu Kanaha, the forty miles of no development. This is the order of God which I now uphold. Lamaku means standing torch. And I am the first Lamaku of the modern era. Before me, from the beginning of time, you see, the world began in the Pacific right here. And here, we are the first people of the world. And in connection to all first nations of the earth are we. So I am the first Lamaku. And as such, we hear from Most High God.
You have thirty seconds remaining on your second item.
Thank you. You can flag it. Say, what's your name? Could I have your name?
Please direct all comments to the chair. Thank you.
I would like her.
Ms. Roy, Ms. Roy, please, Ms. Roy, please look at me and please speak to me.
I would like her name.
Okay, uh, please, please continue with your testimony.
Will, I will continue, but please be.
Your three minutes are finished for item two. You can move on to item.
Not interrupt. I have nine minutes. Please signal. Mr. Au, would you concur that that is a valid request?
Ms. Ms. Roy, please continue with your.
My name is Kahunanui Lamaku Mikahala Roy. I will thank you to respect the people who come before you. As I said, Ahu Enahayau was restored. Thanks to that restoration, we have now received a miracle of the earth. Do you all remember the miracles, the Lady of Fatima, the Lady of Lords? The miracle of the story of Joan of Arc? Now we have our own. In twenty ten, we began to hear from the ancestors of Uivi. The people, the people have been chosen as Lamaku, serve Most High God, but serve the people of the earth, not only Hawaii and the Pacific, but the world. So I am commanded, I listen joyfully to the Kauha, the commands of Akua. This drum symbolizes the life of this temple. No other place do we hear from the ancestors. What a treasure this is. And a message has been delivered. Ke'au Llama is the era of light that God gives us. Instead of facing a close of the end of anything, it is the beginning of life where God promises to heal the planet and all life upon the planet. Therefore, my work is paramount and important. I have written the legislature and many, many offices. Today, I will read to you words from your staff member, Maryam Palma. Aloha, I'm ready to confirm that I've received and reviewed the materials shared by Kahunanui Lamaku Mikahala Roy, Kahu of Ahu Enahayau at Kamakuhunu Hawaii. Following the April eighth twenty twenty five meeting of the Kona CDP Action Committee, I engaged in a series of calls and email engages with Lamaku Mikahala Roy. During these conversations, she generously shared her mana'o and provided nine documents highlighting the cultural significance of the forty mile stretch of land from Kaloko Honokohau to Honaunau. Lamaku Mikahala Roy emphasized the sacred nature of this region and the need for the scrutiny on land use decisions in this area.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
Please comply with my request. I would like to confirm that the planning department has received similar materials and additional related documentation directly from Lamaku Mikahala Roy. Planning Department staff has also been present at several public meetings where she has shared this testimony and context. Meetings include Leeward Planning Commission, Cultural Resources Commission, Kona Community Development Plan Action.
Three minutes are finished. Thank you for your testimony.
And so, council. In continuation, I will say that why Akua speaks on the importance of the forty miles is the relevance that these lands have to Mauna Wakiya. In the within the forty miles, in the center of this is Ahu Enahayau. Ahu Enahayau symbolizes and represents the true oracle. The oracle is the Lananu'umamao. It is the area where we convene with Most High God. And this is a symbolic representation, the hayau is, of Mauna Wakiya. This is why there is to never be development on the Mauna. And this is evidence that I submit to you, this good commission. Today, you are hearing this, this is living testimony from the heart of the spirit of these lands and the traditions of the past, right here, meeting right here before you. This is what you are hearing. Now, if you have any questions, please feel free at the right time.
Ms. Roy, please, please wrap it up. Please wrap it up in ten seconds.
I'm in um any time for, uh, I'm into my third area, aren't I? The my third three minutes?
No, you're not, ma'am, please.
Here's my second.
We'll give you, we'll give you about ten seconds to wrap it up.
I have three, three more minutes, don't I?
You have ten seconds to wrap it up. Please start the time.
Mister Au, if are you make, have you, are you sure that that is certain? And if you have any questions, any of you, please feel free to ask at this time. Are you clear on why the forty miles need protection, where there is to be no development there? And this, the presence of the drum today highlights this. Bahuli Iko'a Oka'avaloa comes out at times of great importance. And it's been there on the lands at the Hawaii County Council, building in Hilo so many times. So today it's here symbolically speaking about the very important message of the Kapu Kanaha, the forty miles, no development of these precious lands. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Do we have any more in person or Zoom testifiers at this time?
Not in person, Chair.
Ms. Camaro, do we have any Zoom testifiers?
Not at this time, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, um, do you want to take a break or do you, should we just go right into agenda item number one? Okay, can we go ahead and do a five minute recess? The time is ten twenty. Let's come back at ten twenty six. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to bring back our Leeward Planning Commission meeting back to order and the time is 10:27. So at this time, um, we have closed public testimony and we're going to go right into Agenda Item Number One. The commission will take Agenda Items Number One and Number Two together, but will call for separate motions for action. So Agenda Item Number One, applicant, I hope I'm saying this right, Bose LLC, PL SMA 2025-00072. Application for Special Management Area Use Permit to construct a four-story 34-unit condominium building with a pool and related improvements on a 1.195-acre shoreline parcel within the special management area. The subject property is located on the Makai side of Ali'i Drive approximately 0.75 miles south of Lunapule Road, Pua Pua Second North Corner Hawaii, TMK 375020021. And also, applicant, applicant number two, Bose LLC formerly Ko'a Ventures LLC SMA 437. Request to revoke Special Management Area Use Permit Number 437, which was approved on October 3, 2023, by the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, excuse me, October 3, 2003, by the Planning Commission to allow for the development of a four-story, 32-unit condominium building and related improvements on a 1.95-acre shoreline parcel within the special management area. The subject property is located on the Makai side of Ali'i Drive approximately 0.7 miles south of Lunapule Road, Pua Pua Second North Corner Hawaii, TMK 375020021. So Mr. Roy, please go on with staff presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is for Special Management Area Use Permit Application, PL SMA 2025-000072. Here's the location of the proposed project. You can see it's south of Kaedoo'akona proper on the Makai side of Ali'i Drive. The proposed project is to construct a four-story, 34-unit condominium building for multifamily residential use. Related development includes a swimming pool, drainage improvements on the parcel, a public access pathway and parking, and then additional parking areas for the condo. The condominium includes a range of unit types from one to three-bedroom units that include some included den, there's kitchen, living room, bathrooms, and a private lanai. The building will be approximately 45 feet in height. For reference, the condos on either side of this proposed project are roughly 40 feet in height. The project includes 34 parking spaces beneath the building and then an additional 13 Malka side parking stalls, three of which will be dedicated for shoreline public access. ADA parking will also be included in the parking area. A Malka to Makai shoreline access path that leads to a lateral shoreline access path was required under a previously approved grant of easement for public access and parking. And the applicant will be beholden to that, that agreement. Three parking spaces, as I mentioned, will be dedicated for public shoreline access, not to be used by the condo. Here's the county zoning. I outlined the project parcel in red. So that's within the RM 1.5, which is multifamily residential 1,500 square feet. North of the subject parcel, we have resort hotel 1,500 square feet. And then you see a number of single-family and multifamily, which is RS and RM. And then down south of Malka of Ali'i Drive, we have the agricultural five acres. State land use, urban. Lupeg, or general plan map, indicates this parcel is dual-zoned with open in the shoreline area, which is common, and medium-density urban for the Malka portion of the project parcel. You can see low-density urban in more Malka areas, along with urban expansion kind of south of the project area. Here's an aerial photograph of the project parcel. You can see the surrounding development. Right now, the project is completely undeveloped. I have walked the parcel a few times and the container there is a remnant and will be removed, but the project parcel is scrub koa with very little to no vegetation. That's not invasive. Here's a site plan. This is a site plan that was updated recently by the applicant to showcase the setbacks, the side yard setbacks. I outlined the, or shaded in the building footprint in blue. And so you can see the building footprint here. Here's on the Malka side, you have three shoreline public parking spots. And then the Malka to Makai shoreline access will run along the north side of the property and then connect to the lateral shoreline access that runs on the Makai side of the property. So that'll be never developed and will remain open for access from Ali'i Drive to the shoreline and then along the project parcel. Additional parking, you can see here, there's parking, I'll show the site plans, but parking in the building and then additional parking is here. And then there's a loading zone. As you know, some of you, I like to show the cross-section or the heights so you can get an idea. The east elevation, this would be facing Ali'i Drive. West elevation would be what's facing the ocean. And then, of course, we have the side and the sides. Just to give you an idea of what the project is going to look like. You did get a full set of the plans, but I like to share the parking. So this is the first floor and you can see the parking area on the first floor with three units. And then second floor, third floor, and fourth, or similar build-out of unit style. And then I just kind of showed you the first, second, third floor. The cross-section that the applicant provided. But this will be completely under, the parking will be completely under and within that first story. Here's a site photo. So I'm standing just roughly off of Ali'i Drive, looking Makai towards the ocean. And you can see the two existing condominiums on either side of the project parcel. Here down at the shoreline, looking Malka. You can see the overgrowth kind of blocks the view of the, one of the condos, but the other condo is pretty visible at this point. The shoreline access will run along this boundary with the, with this condo here. Here's kind of a view of the lateral shoreline access that's provided and will be, remain in perpetuity undeveloped. That's looking north. And then here's another one looking north and then looking south. So this is the trail that allows for coastal access. Here you can see this is a view of the property entrance on Ali'i Drive, looking north. You can see our county vehicle is roughly where the entrance is going to be. And again, looking south from Ali'i Drive, the project parcel entrance here on the right. At this time, the director's recommendation is for the approval of PL SMA 2025-000072 with the stated conditions. And I can take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Roy, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Roy, for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. The first one being that, so you stated the new, the proposed structure is going to be about 45 feet high. And that the existing structures on either side are about 40 feet high. So if I was in the top, in a condo on the top floor of the Casa de Amdeco, the one that's to the north, and I was looking straight out, would I be looking like up to see that top condo or down or straight across?
When I was researching the heights of those adjoining structures, I put 40 feet because that was what was in the plans, but with the grade there, it was, it could be higher. But I didn't want to, you know, overstep. So they'll probably be very, very close. If anything, maybe there'd be a slight look up, but they should be very similar in height all the way across.
Okay, and the Kona I looked like in your photo, it's a little bit lower than the Casa de Amdeco. So we'd probably be looking up maybe one story?
I'm not sure one story, but yeah, the, the morphology of the landscape on that one is slightly lower. So yeah, you'd be looking up slightly. I don't think it would be a full story, higher. Because again, they're, they're very similar in height already. And the landscape across that whole area is generally the same, but you're right. It goes higher from the white condo and then a little bit lower. But again, generally the same.
Okay, thank you. I, I, just as a warning, I'm going to ask you in case you did any height things on the site there. My second question is in regards to the updated site plan that you showed on your presentation. There were two red lines that showed a 14-foot from the property line, but it didn't indicate what those two red lines were. Could you explain what the two red lines are?
We, the director wanted to showcase that the side yard setbacks were properly set. In this area, the setback, side yard setback starts at eight feet, but then changes and increases as you go up in stories. So we wanted to make sure that we indicated that it was the proper distance beyond what is the standard starting point of eight feet. So really, that's just to showcase the, the, the width of the side yard setbacks. And then the applicant provided some other measurements, distance from Ali'i Drive to the building and then the shoreline setback area and then the width of the public access. So we just wanted to make sure that things were very clear on the site plan. But again, the director had some concerns that there could be some confusion because the setbacks being typically eight feet, but need to be extended because of the height of the buildings. So, so we put that in there just for clarity.
Okay, thank you. So going forward for the future, because I'm not, and I think other, the new commissioners as well are not familiar with all the different requirements. Could we kind of label that, those things in the future, that this is the side yard setback?
Sure.
And then also, the jurisdiction that I worked for, we always date-stamped things when they came in new because it was a little confusing to me. The only thing that I could find saying how recent this was was the title in the list of digital documents. Is that a standard thing to date? Are things normally date-stamped when they come in?
Yes and no. That kind of all depends on, now that everything is digital, the, there's electronic kind of stamp that happens when the, when the material is submitted to Epic. And then when it's moved over to review, there, there's dates that are associated with that. So the old way would be to stamp things, but now everything's digitally.
Okay, I'll check in with staff after the meeting to figure out how to find that.
You know, that might be something that we can definitely add to our procedure would be to add when the material was submitted to the planning department.
Yeah, thank you very much. No further questions.
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Naborikawa. Before we move on for further questions, Mr. Roy, can you also present item number two? Just so we have all the information and when we ask questions to the applicant. Yeah, we can address both items and Commissioner Rodriguez will get your, you're going to be the first question after this presentation. Thank you.
Okay. This is for the same applicant, was LLC formerly Coaventures LLC in that their request to revoke special management area use permit number four three seven. So SMA use permit number four three seven was approved on October 3rd, 2003. The approval was to develop a four-story, thirty-two-unit condominium project. The current applicant is requesting to revoke that SMA number four three seven to pursue an updated SMA use permit. The reason for this request or revocation, the applicant did not complete the project in accordance with the timing conditions of SMA number four three seven. And as such, the planning director required an updated SMA use permit be applied for and submitted for review and decision by the planning commission. I know a member of the public had concerns but about the legality of revocation and its relationship to the conditions. And in this case, they did not adhere to the timing condition. So therefore, the revocation is, is legal. The director, of course, is recommending that to revoke SMA number four three seven so that the applicant can pursue the project under PL SMA 2025-72. And that's that.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Commissioner Rodriguez, is your question related to the presentation or is it related to something else?
Related to the planning director's recommendation report on item one.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's save that for discussion. So at this point, commissioners, if you have any questions for Mr. Roy as far as his presentation, from what we saw, that's, that's where we're going to ask, accept questions now. So Commissioner Naba, do you have a question?
I do, thank you. I'm just trying to clarify this. It looks like the project is requesting thirty-four units, but part of the reports referring to thirty-two units, is it, is that a typo?
That was the previous approval. Under SMA four three seven was for thirty-two units.
Right, okay. I'll read through it again. It looks like within the new request, it's thirty, it talks about thirty-four, but then when we're talking about all the different aspects with regards to water and so forth and so on, it kind of reverts back to thirty-two again?
Well, you may be referring to the Department of Public Works comments. They never commented on this project. So the director and I thought that we would add the comments from the previous SMA to ensure that all those conditions were included from the previous approval. A lot of times departments, when they see projects, don't comment again. So I try to reach out to them, but you know, I, I can't force another agency to, to, you know, comment. So the director and I felt that we would add all those conditions that were required from the previous approval onto this one, whether the agency thought, you know, commented or not. In order to ensure that any concerns from the previous SMA were also included in this new approval.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that may be what you're thinking of. There is some discussion because of the thirty-two from the previous, but that's really the distinction. The SMA four three seven was for thirty-two and this current request is for thirty-four.
Okay, so having said that, with thirty-four units, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing and seeing is there's a lot of testimony with regards to the concern for parking. So we have thirty-four units, forty-four stalls. Of the forty-four, there's pretty much just seven extra stalls in addition to the thirty-four. So the questions are, yes, parking, is there enough space for that? The fact that households might have more than two vehicles. Also, is there a place for service deliveries, place for them to park there? I think I heard you say something.
Yeah, there is a turnaround area, a loading zone. So you have the thirty-four parking spots within the building. Then you have the ten additional parking. You have the loading zone and then you have the three shoreline public parking spots. The director may be able to talk more about the requirements of parking based on zoning and development.
Okay, no, I mean, I think that it's falling within that, I'm sure. I'm just, just asking on behalf of the testimony that I've heard, what's the timeframe that, that's set in place to complete the project this time?
I believe we gave them the five years, which is typical in the condition. And then they get one administrative time extension, so ten years. And then anything after that, they have to come back before you guys here at the planning commission for any additional time.
Okay, and then one last question. I know that there's discussion with the Department of Water Supply, but will there be a problem with regards to gaining the amount of water credits?
You guys should have gotten, they submitted comments late, unfortunately. So it wasn't in the background, but you should have got a copy of their submitted comments where they said there'd be some new updated. The applicant may be able to spell a little bit more about that, but they didn't say there wasn't enough water. They just have to update their, their, their water connections.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roy. At this time, before we take any further questions, why don't we have the applicant come up? And we can call Mr. Roy back if we need to ask staff questions. So can you please raise your right hand and so I can swear you in? Do you affirm to tell the truth in front of the Word Planning Commission today?
I do.
Okay, before you speak, please state your name and where you reside and please go ahead with your presentation.
My name is John Pippin, Land Planning Hawaii. I reside in Honoka. To my left is the applicant, Mr. Warren Israelson.
I reside in Minnesota.
What was your last name again, sir?
Israelson. It's like the country Israel with a sun on the end. It's a Scandinavian name.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Go, go ahead, Mr. Pippin.
Aloha, Kako. Good morning, Chair Al, members of the Hollywood Planning Commission. Thank you very much for being here and for your review of this application. We have received and reviewed the recommendation report from Director Darrow. We appreciate the favorable recommendation and all the work that went into this application by planning staff. We agree with the proposed conditions with one proposed amendment to condition number twelve. And this is intended to align with the options for permitting within the special management area on a shoreline property. And this would bring condition twelve for this project in alignment with conditions similar on other properties that you may see later today. Our suggested edit would be, everything stays the same, but here, I'll, I'll pick it up. No vegetation removal, land alteration or construction shall occur between the shoreline and shoreline setback line unless approved by this permit. And then we add approved by a minor structure or minor activity determination by the planning department or approved via shoreline setback variance by the planning commission. We just essentially don't want to shut down any of those options by strictly saying that they're not available to this property. We're not intending to build anything in the shoreline setback. But should it be required for whatever reason, the shoreline setback variance process, which is approved by the planning commission, would still be a possibility. With that said, there was significant testimony we heard today and we saw in writing. So I'll, I'll try to be efficient in addressing all of these and leave plenty of space for question and answer. Regarding parking on site, yes, some of the area testifiers questioned whether there was going to be enough parking. Thirty-four are planned beneath the building. An additional thirteen for a total of forty-seven for the condo use are planned outside in the open to, to the Malka side of the building. And then the additional three for public shoreline access for a total of fifty. There is space for additional parking on the property, should that be desired or requested. The intent is to line up better with low-impact development standards, to leave more space on the property for landscaping, for green space, not covering areas with additional impervious surfaces. So we think this is adequate parking and it does line up with the zoning codes, minimum parking standards, which for this property would require only forty-three spaces would be required. We're showing forty-seven proposed plus the three public parking spaces. Regarding water, water supply, I consulted with the Department of Water Supply recently and they said fifty units, five zero, were available for this property. That is subject to change. However, that is the most recent information I've gotten. Typically, for a single-family residence, one unit, one unit equates to one residence. You get savings in a multi-family structure, but because you're not having all these accessory uses like watering a yard for each residence. There's still landscaping, but we're showing landscape irrigation savings and mitigation measures to really use water efficiently on this property. There is ample water. My, my take is it'll, it'll use less than thirty-four units of water, but that will be subject to official calculations from an engineer to be reviewed and accepted by Department of Water Supply. Testimony also included support from neighboring property owners, which we didn't really hear much about today. A lot of these neighboring property owners in the Casa Indico and Kona Isles have been a bit frustrated by illicit use on the property. Houseless persons making up camps and causing, causing issues. So they're in support. They want to see this property developed and stewarded. It would increase their, their quality of life overall and security on their properties. Testimony also questioned the Ka Pakai, Ka Pakai analysis for valued cultural resources. Excuse me. This is discussed in section K of the application at length. We identify the resources along the shoreline area and the ocean fronting the property as valuable for traditional cultural practices, gathering, et cetera, fishing. Shoreline access will be maintained and actually improved by this project via the Malka Makai access path and the lateral shoreline access path plus the public parking spaces, which would be provided and maintained by this project. The vegetation on the property, as also noted by planning staff, is alien, invasive in nature and not really of high value for gathering purposes. And further intensive archaeological surveys were conducted on this property and the state historic preservation division concluded officially that no historic properties would be affected by development of this property. Furthermore, some testifiers questioned sea level rise. And this is covered in our application report, section nine D and section H. Three point two feet of sea level rise projected and evaluated by the state's models would not affect the subject property. That level of sea level rise would remain at the far Makai boundary, the shoreline of the property. And forty-foot required setbacks would be ample to mitigate any future concerns from sea level rise. Also tsunami threat, coastal hazards were brought up in some testimony. This was not new for this application. It came up in previous iterations of this project. And Department of Public Works and the planning department and the planning commission all agreed that improvements to Alii Drive fronting the project, including road, a road widening setback and turn lanes in the center of Alii Drive would help to mitigate that danger. And we're agreeing to continue and make those improvements as a part of the project. Ultimately, this project is bracketed to the north and south by older condominiums, larger condominiums. Casa de Mdeco was built in the late sixties and Kona Isles built in the early seventies. This is an opportunity to show something new in Kona, show that there is opportunity here still. It will lead to economic and employment benefits for the county, not only in terms of construction, but long-term maintenance and management of the project. I think that covers it. I'm sure there'll be more questions, but I think Warren, Mr. Israelson wanted to say just a few more words about his background. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could just take a couple of minutes to introduce myself. I've been coming to the island for a little over twenty years now. Coming primarily to work at the University of Nations campus. I am trained as a civil engineer and my career has been in land development. And so I've been overseeing development of the campus for two decades. And so we have a fair amount of experience. Our company is the contractor for the campus. I do all that on a volunteer basis for our entire company. And so we have a fair amount of experience here on the island. Construction, we built condos for staff housing and dorms for student housing and the dining facilities and classrooms and so forth. So we have a fair amount of experience here. And we're actually quite excited to get started on this project here. Assuming that you guys approve it, I'll be coming a lot more often. So looking forward to answering any of your questions now. Thank you.
And Chair Al, if I may add one more from my notes, from testifiers. The petition that was mentioned with six hundred plus signatories is not for this project. I just wanted to make that clear. It's for helping the island and infrastructure generally, right? And it says something along the lines, we stand to say the island's resources and infrastructure must become a focus priority of the Hawaii Planning Department, County Council and community development members for the safety of all who live here and visit. And we do think that this project actually helps. Connects to the county sewer, it's served by adequate utilities, it provides for better shoreline access and even traffic improvements, which is kind of a rare happening for SMA permit.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pippin. Thank you, Mr. Israelson. So we'll go into questions from commissioners and we'll start off with Commissioner Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, my question is on the planning director's recommendation report, page ten. It starts on page ten, paragraph six and seven. Water usage, you know, it's just, you know, there is no commitment, you know, here in writing from the water department. And, you know, I think there should be, you know, written there, you know, what, what the proposed water usage is going to be. And, you know, obviously, you know, it's changed for, our island has changed. And, and, you know, obviously, you know, it's changed for, our island has changed from two thousand and three to the present day. So, you know, I think that's, I think that should be in there, you know, that way the public knows it and, you know, we know.
Aloha, Chair Al, members of the planning commission, Jeff Daro with the planning department. Commissioner Rodriguez, there is a comment letter from the Department of Water Supply. It's our exhibit number three in the background report. Water supply says specifically that they can supply water for this project. In all of our applications that we receive regarding water usage, the Department of Water Supply always requests that the applicant submit updated water calculations before they will issue the entire project for water credits. So they have already stated in their comment letter, there is enough water for this project. They just want to get calculations to identify exactly how much water will be used for this project.
Okay, thank you.
Just to add to that, we did add that as a condition of the permit as well.
Before we move on to the further question, I just want to clarify with the applicant. I know you did mention that you, you read the conditions and you did, you're requesting an amendment to condition number twelve. But just to please state it, have you received the background report and recommendations? And do you agree with the recommendations, including with your proposed condition?
Yes, we have received, reviewed and agree with, with the stated requested amendment to number twelve.
Okay, next question, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
So since Director Daro was sitting up here, I'm going to ask that question first and then I'm going to go to a question for Mr. Pippen. So Director Daro, condition three references the site plan in the November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four submittal. Should that be changed to reference the updated site plan that was submitted on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five? Or is there something I'm missing that automatically takes that in?
We can add that in. It says that if you read on further, all supplemental material.
Okay, so that would be included under that phrase. Okay, thank you very much that clarifies it for me. Mr. Pippen, my same question about if I'm sitting in the top unit in Casada Indico or the top unit Kona Isle, what would I be seeing out that window?
Yes, it's, thank you for your question, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa. It's hard to say exactly. We've done view simulations for the property, but those were primarily directed to the protected scenic views from Kuakini. And this project is hardly perceptible between the two existing condos from that vantage. The actual proposed height from the elevation drawings that Mr. Roy shared is just over forty-two feet. And that leaves a little bit of wiggle room between what's proposed and the max of forty-five in the zoning district. Further, the, the building is proposed to be sited on the, the lower elevation portion of the property, the Makai side of the property. And naturally, a lower grade would lead to a lower finished top elevation. So those, those units in the neighboring condos that are about the same location, Malka to Makai would have about the same view to a neighboring unit. Those units higher up, and so they're kind of stepped in those condos, the higher up, closer to a LEI drive, units would be able to see over this proposed building.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, there was a letter in the written testimony that was submitted to us. And I'm assuming that because of the size of this project, a survey was done on the property lines, but they were recommending a survey. So I just want to confirm that a survey has already been done for the property lines.
Yes, of course.
And then my last question is, during this current proposal or any of the previous proposals, were lineal descendants included in any of the discussions as to what was happening on this property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Enough of the questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa. Commissioner Kanuha.
Aloha. Morning, guys, how are you? This question is to Mr. Pippen and Mr. Israelson. That TIAR done in two thousand and oh-three. Do you feel that's sufficient enough? Because a lot of the concern from our community was traffic mitigation. I saw that, you know, are you, are you a traffic management consultant? I know you're an engineer, but I saw your stamp on here for the updated revised version that you put in. And I just wanted to touch on that because there's a few other questions I do want to ask. But I just want to touch on the traffic first.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll reiterate the question. Mr. Israelson has, has hearing difficulty. He, he is a professional engineer licensed in Hawaii. He sent the traffic study out to a professional traffic engineering firm and he can discuss that more in depth. And his stamp is on the project as he is qualified to do so. We believe it is adequate to address the impacts of this project, which according to the zoning code would not even trigger a formal traffic study were this a request for a rezone. This is thirty-four units, thirty-four peak hour trips, well below the fifty peak hour trip trigger. The main thing that we're looking at in this SMA is can we help with mitigating coastal hazards? And we're complying with what the planning department, Department of Public Works and Planning Commission previously agreed were appropriate mitigations in improving a LEI drive fronting the property.
May I ask what improvements that you stated? Because I have not seen none in any of the traffic mitigation reports.
Yes, thank you. Future road widening setback to allow for obviously widening of a LEI drive at the subject property and also extending the turn lanes in the center of a LEI drive so that they pass the property. So folks can more easily get to, into and out of the property.
Okay, my next question is about the EIS. Do you feel that a nineteen eighty-nine EIS is sufficient enough? And up to standards of what would be good and applicable, applicable, like, you know, moving forward forty-plus years, fifty-plus years down the road?
Thank you. The, the AIS is old. I, I agree. It did include intensive survey of the property. They found two clearing mounds, did test excavations of those clearing mounds and found no cultural remains or archaeological resources, elements in those mounds. It was reviewed by the state historic preservation division even more recently than the original publication of those for the previous SMA. While Shipti did not comment on this application, typically that means they don't have comments, they don't have concerns. Their previous comment that no historic properties would be effective stands.
Okay.
We, we defer to their expertise and if they were to request.
Yeah, I haven't seen any of Shipti's comments and that's why I wanted to address that. Like, like I said, you know, everything coming through for an EIS, this is a big project. It's not a residential home on a LEI drive. It's a multitude of units and the community is concerned that has come out. You guys have read the testimony. I believe you guys have done a great job, but just to address a lot of those things that are there. Traffic is huge, you know? Nothing against his credentials, but when you, any rezone, it should actually kick in for any major big project. Because that is, if you look at what has happened to a LEI drive and we start moving things, moving it forward and it turns into that cluster, it, it's something that needs to be addressed soon. It's not on you guys as the applicant, it's something that we as a county and the state need to address sooner than later. Infrastructure demands, but by moving projects and getting projects moving forward, you know, the timeline and making sure these projects get done in that timeline is also a major concern. Because you, you've seen it, it's, this started in nineteen eighty-nine, it hasn't moved anywhere.
Okay.
Chair Al, if I may.
Let's just continue on with our questions and, you know, commissioners, we were starting to go into discussion. So yeah, let's, let's discuss amongst ourselves, but let's just ask questions. Before we move on to any more questions, I'd like to follow up with that EIS question with Director Daro. So the EIS is not, is an old EIS. So can you just explain why on page fourteen it says that the proposed project was evaluated with respect to HRS chapter three, four, three dash five and no triggers were identified? Can you just explain that and why it's not triggered?
Sure. Chapter three, four, three of the Hawaii revised statutes has nine triggers. None of those nine triggers were being triggered with this project. Had it been, we always, that's the first thing we look at when a project is submitted to us. We look to see if an EIS or an EA is triggered. If it is, we don't accept the application. We return it and we, we request the applicant to go through that process before we move forward with whatever application.
Thank you, Mr. Daro. Mr. Pippen?
To, to clarify, your, your question was for an EIS, which none was triggered, none was required, none was prepared for this project. Previously, Commissioner Kanuha had asked about the AIS, the Archaeological Inventory Survey. And that was completed, it was old, subject to review by Shipti and no further comment. So EIS, AIS acronyms, they sound a lot alike, but very different.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I was just going with all my vowels, going right down the line. Any other commissioners with any questions? Commissioner Inaba?
Just one last one, thank you. Is there a possibility that these owners could turn their units into short-term vacation rentals? Thereby possibly requiring more parking or creating more traffic?
As the zoning code currently regulates short-term vacation rentals, if this project were done in the form of a condominium property regime, those owners could establish short-term vacation rentals in those properties. Yes.
Thank you.
If I could elaborate on that, the parking in regards to STVRs in multiple-family residential zoning remains the same.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Irish?
In regards to Mr. Pippen, on your, I'm sorry, I'm on this document. I don't know what the title is, but in proposalment of the traffic mitigating measures, I do see the widening of the highway and the turnoff lane. Is this going to run in congruency with the five years? Is there a timeline on this improvement?
Typically, the trigger, let me, I'm looking at the conditions. It's typically prior to occupancy. Sorry? Yeah, we're, one second. Oh, yes, yes, thank you, Director Daro. Upon request from the county, those improvements would be, sorry, one second. Yeah, they'll be, they'll be made and dedicated to the county at no cost.
Thank you.
Director Daro?
Thank you. If I could take a minute here. I happen to be here in two thousand and three. I don't think it was actually here back then. We met in hotels and different things. But I was here for this particular application with Core Ventures. I, I believe I was the planner that worked on that. It was a very unique situation because there had been a lot of pressure put on the planning commissions regarding traffic improvements relative to special management area permits because of a recent court case called Topless versus the Planning Commission. And so Chris Yuen, who was our director at that time, had really put a lot of pressure wanting to see there be some improvements relative to the impacts of this project on a LEI drive. And he, you know, with the understanding that he could be challenged based on Topless versus the Planning Commission, was able to establish those conditions with the applicant's acceptance and it moved forward. I believe the same thing is happening here. There's always the possibility of being challenged, but it appears that the applicant is amenable to the conditions. We normally, again, in SMA permits, look at the criteria for approval. It's very rare because of that challenge that we, we include traffic improvements in those permits. The other thing that was unique about the application was during that time, there was quite a bit of testimony coming from the two adjoining neighbors in regards to visual impacts. And it was, you know, there was a lot of discussion because there were people saying, you're going to block my view, right? And the commission were saying, well, this isn't a, you know, this is an SMA permit. It's not a change of zone. It's, you know, visual impacts are basically from the nearest state highway for SMA. It's not, oh, you're going to impact my view from my hotel because of your hotel or my condo from your hotel. It was almost like if I build it first, then I have better views than you and you can't block my view. So it was really a lively discussion back then. And the, the actual understanding was that, you know, yeah, it's, it's going to block views, but it's, fair is fair. It's, it's not a matter of when you come in, it's a matter of your ability and your right to build on this particular property. In this, in this particular zoning, had this request be submitted outside of the SMA, it wouldn't even be coming before the planning commission. It would come to the planning department for plan approval and it happens on a regular basis. But again, I'm just kind of bringing some context about that. And I'd also like to apologize to Commissioner Inaba, looking at our background recommendation. The section on water does reference thirty-two units, but in the comment letter from Water Supply, it actually does address the thirty-four units. So I think the water areas, and again, we do have conditions, making sure the applicant submits updated calculations before. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daro, for the, for the clarification. So moving forward, I just want to make it clear to the commissioners that we have, we have two agenda items that we're, we're discussing right now. One is approval or disapproval of the SMA. And item number two is to revoke the permit that was issued back in two thousand and three. So what I would like to do is, Mr. Daro, could you just briefly talk about item number two and, and the request to revoke the SMA permit that was issued in twenty, in two thousand and three?
Sure. Basically, what happens in these types of requests when somebody submits a new application and we have a previous application, we would like, if there's an order, you want to make sure that you address the, the current request because of the fact that there is the possibility it could be approved or not approved. If it's approved, then depending If it's approved, then um depending on the applicant, if they would like to go forward with the review, with the revocation, that would be appropriate, we'd wanna see that happen. We don't want two permits active at the same time. Uh if it is not approved, then the applicant can um, you know, consider keeping it uh still there in case they wanna possibly consider a time extension request for that particular project. Uh but basically, it's a very similar project, uh so we'll see what happens. The applicant may wanna revoke it regardless of what the decision is.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Daro, for that clarification. So commissioners, I just want you to understand uh what we're dealing with right now and follow the discussions that we're having. So uh with that said, if no more commissioners has any questions, I'm uh ready to entertain a motion. So we can discuss as a commission. Vice Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
I move that the application for special management area use permit docket number P L dash. Um could we request whether or not there's public testimony?
Uh do we have any further?
Yes, Mr. Chair, sorry, there's one um additional public testifier for this item.
Okay, um sorry, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, uh let's hold off on the motion and let's go ahead with our Zoom testifier.
Oh, no, it's an in-person testifier.
We have Jay Berg, please come up.
Chair, we also have one Zoom testifier.
Thank you, Tracy.
Okay, uh will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Leeward Planning Commission?
Yes.
Thank you, uh will you please uh introduce yourself? Uh you will have three minutes and I'll let you know when thirty seconds remain. Uh along with your introduction, please state uh the town you reside in, you may begin.
Hi, I'm Jay Berg, I reside at Casa de Amptico on the side that faces this project. Um I heard somebody, one of the guys saying, oh yeah, everybody wants it because of blah, blah, blah. Well, no, that's not true. Um I lived there full-time, a lot of people that said they wanted, they have vacation rentals there or they only live there part-time. Um so, sorry. I am a migraine sufferer and I'm very triggered by noise. I was told by my realtor when I bought the place that it's impossible to build on that spot, so I thought, great, I can handle it. So if this uh construction happens, I am going to be miserable in my own home, but I know you don't care about that. Anyway, um so the other reason I don't think this is happening is I also deal with traffic every day between Casa de Amptico and Lunapule. It is backed up bumper to bumper past your property on a regular basis. Um, you know, Allee was not built built for this kind of housing development. It's not, it's too small and you keep adding to this traffic problem. And it's not, you know, it's not me, it's not just me, it's it's a lot of other people who go through exactly the same thing. So that's nicely the thing, also the fact that there's hardly any green spaces at all left on the Makai side of Allee. And, you know, we don't have to have wall-to-wall housing units. That's it.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Berg, for your testimony. Uh Ms. Camaro, do we have, uh can we have our Zoom testifier, please?
Yes, Chair, we have one testifier um that would like to testify for this agenda item. The first testifier's name is Stephen Poludniak. Stephen, please unmute yourself and turn on your camera and our video so that you can be sworn in to testify. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to affirm um to tell the truth on this matter now before the Leeward Planning Commission?
Yes.
You will have three minutes and I will let you know when your thirty seconds remain. Um please state your name, the town you reside in, and you may begin.
My name is Steve Poludniak, I'm uh Director of Corporate Administration for an owner of the property across the street or across the uh Alih uh road in uh Lehi Lani condominium project. Uh it's owned by a company called Kazee Family Hawaii. And that property has been owned by that organization for well over, well going on thirty-five years or somewhere in that area. My questions have to do with testimony, I've already already presented in the form of questions, which quite honestly, I haven't heard anybody address it, so I'm not sure whether it has any relevance to anybody either on the on the commission, uh on the uh the the parties presenting their side of the of the project or or even the uh the folks uh who have done all of the background information, et cetera. I did have a conversation with Mr. Alex Roy earlier in the week, he was very helpful. Uh and that's why I presented what I would, what you call testimony, but a series of twenty-five questions, which we always ask because Kazee Family Hawaii has substantial amount of property on all four islands in the state of Hawaii. So um issue is this, are any of those questions going to be addressed? Have they been addressed? Uh are they important to the to the uh decision-making of the uh uh council here or commission? That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Poludniak. Thank you very much, yeah, we we do have your testimony and your list of twenty-five questions. Thank you for your testimony.
Chair, we have no one else signed up to testify on Zoom for this agenda item.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Camaro, uh Ms. Jackson, we don't have anybody, anybody else in person?
No, Chair.
Okay, uh back to Vice Chair Nobori Kawa.
Thank you, Chair Al. I move that the application for special management area use permit docket number P L dash SMA dash twenty, two thousand and twenty-five dash zero, 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 seven, two be approved based on the planning director's recommendation along with the amendment to condition number twelve which shall be adopted.
Motion was, the motion was made by Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, we uh we'll start off with you and we'll go into discussion.
So um what I've heard today, uh this project appears to be consistent with the uh special management area in Hawaii revised statute two thousand and, excuse me, two, zero, five, A objectives and policies applicable to this type of project. And I also heard that the applicant is voluntarily offering uh traffic mitigation. Uh so I believe that this project does meet the conditions for granting of the special management area use permit. Thank you.
Um any further discussion?
Um I I have not more discussion, I have a just a question first, maybe staff that maybe wasn't addressed? Uh Mr. Roy, I was, I was going through it, I've been trying to find it. Where um where are the B M Ps for this project that are stated that you have to put into place for an SMA? Any SMA, you know, they're gonna ask for any B M Ps, any work done on the shoreline, it will have to be there and I I don't see any.
Uh I'm not sure which specific B M Ps you're talking, construction, best management practices?
Yes.
Those are all set by the Department of Health, like dust, noise, things like that. Um we did put a condition that they need to stake out the forty-foot shoreline setback area. That's the one B M P that we put in place to ensure that there's no development that crosses that even by mistake.
So dust mitigation, none of that for any of the, a- any of the surrounding properties, any soil runoff, anything that needs to go on in the front there, especially with our rain and what's going on. And the, you know, I I would say we've dealt with this issue and I've been in front of this issue where I've been dealing with an SMA that put B M Ps in place. Um that were outside and inside of the shoreline setback, either or, so that's why this question is being raised.
Well, uh the condition that says they have to adhere to chapter ten and twenty-seven relates to runoff.
Okay.
Um the D O H, of course, that's noise.
Yeah, I I saw their comment, there there is nothing.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, for purposes of the minutes, I would ask that only one person speak at a time.
Um but yeah, the specific conditions for best management practices related to the SMA would be the staking off of the forty-foot setback area to ensure that no development crosses that boundary. Um but construction, B M Ps, uh specific ones, uh usually would be set by the director if he requests them. Uh but other than that, we, the other departments, permits and such other rules from other departments that they're required to adhere to, um are the B M Ps essentially that for this problem.
Uh thank you for asking, answering that question.
So the last testifier on Zoom, Mr. Poludniak, uh he had a list of twenty-five questions and um that the the answer to his questions are all gonna be addressed, um just like Commissioner Kanuha's question, it's gonna be addressed during the construction uh uh part of it with the Department of Public Works and that falls under the permit and everything. Um so I hope your uh uh answer was, your question was answered. Okay, yes, um Commissioner Daro, would you like to add to that?
Uh, Mr. Daro.
Mr. Daro, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, I get to come back up. Thank you. Just to uh expound on what uh Alex was saying. So when these guys come in, they have to go through the building permit process. There's strict um construction protocol that's maintained as far as like noise. They have hours of operation they have to uh adhere to, there's like you were saying, dust. Sometimes you'll see these guys put up these huge black dust barriers. Um but there's also, like you were saying, uh chapter ten, chapter twenty-seven where they have to come in grading permit, make sure that they may need um as far as the grading permit, all the topographical, and then we put in these barriers along the shoreline so they cannot be doing any activity in that forty-foot shoreline area. So it's, it's out of our control, majority of it, uh we're just looking at the SMA, but we do add in the overall conditions, making sure that they're complying with all of the other agencies' requirements.
Thank you, yeah, with those conditions, the questions and concerns raised by, you know, community,
Sure.
those B M Ps would address that, and that's the reason why I I address this, cuz I didn't see any. Uh obviously, coming out the public testimony, if that was addressed, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daro.
Uh Commissioner Rodriguez?
Uh yes, I, you know, I I have a question, I, you know, and 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 it seems like, you know, we don't have, I don't have all the information to make a fair decision, you know, I I'm underwater. You know, I I believe there's a ten percent uh voluntary water restriction right now and um you know, we don't have how how big the pool is and exactly how much water is gonna be used, so you know, it's kind of a, it's hard to make a decision. You know, I don't wanna be unfair to the applicant and I don't wanna be unfair to our, you know, our public, cuz you know, uh they all, we all own water, you know, water, so and it's uh, you know, what what was approved back in two thousand and three, you know, our island has grown, so there's more uh so I think that's missing, you know, so it's kinda hard for me to make a decision, say yes or no, cuz I don't have that that information. And uh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for that comment, and you know, that's what we're here for. Um we have a balanced commission and we all bring little bit different perspective to the table uh when we do make make um make decisions. And in this case, I feel that um you know, on paper, like Vice Chair Nobori Kawa said, everything is is done properly, they have their correct um uh uh they've gone through the procedures. Um you know, they're required to do what they need to do and they're going out and beyond on a few cases of what they're required to do. So on paper, it it looks good, and that's where we come in as a commission, where we can talk about different things. And maybe what I wanna talk about is the community. Uh maybe if commissioners, you can just follow with me and just just, let's think about the community, because we have a lot of people, a a lot of testifiers. Most of the testifiers are against this project, so let's just think about that and and see how this um affects the community. And I would like to see where you stand on that. Any commissioners?
I I would like to address that, you know, um I don't know if I'm allowed to uh refer to past projects, you know, that were approved, like the, we approved one not too long ago, the um a hundred-room hotel and uh you know, there's concern about water usage. And uh you know, it seems like the community, you know, uh uh you know, is right, you know, we're not um addressing that and um, you know, it's important. You know, it's a resource that it's, you know, it's important, you know, we're on the island and um you know, I think, you know, um I don't know what the laws are, you know, but I think, you know, if if you, they want us to look at a project, they should be specific, you know, how, we're gonna use this many gallons and and um and maybe, you know, if there's not water, you know, we cut back on the units, you know, so I I think, you know, that should be presented to us and the community.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. Any other comments about that? Okay, um uh let's, let's go ahead and take a five-minute recess, but before we go to this five-minute recess, I just wanna uh briefly talk about um uh our community. You know, our community consists of the residents that live here in Hawaii. Um our local people, but our community is also our visitors. Our visitors need a place to thrive, they need a place to stay. And and I support this motion and I think we are addressing um our local communities' concerns and we're also addressing our visitors' concerns and even the neighbors. And and again, each one of us brings something different to the table, so I just wanted to 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 give you that food for thought. And let's go ahead and go into a five-minute recess, it's eleven thirty-eight, and let's come back in about five minutes, so thank you. We'll bring back the Leeward Planning Commission back to order, uh, the, on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the time is eleven forty-seven AM. Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, so, um, Director Dar- Darrow, uh, there have been a lot of, uh, concerns raised by the community about the, how old the, um, archaeological inventory surveys and the environmental assessments are. Uh, so I would like to amend my motion. And so I move to amend my motion. Okay, so, so the question, the question is, um, it did, is, is that something that is appropriate for what we're looking at because of the age of those documents? A lot has changed.
So, uh, if I could address each one. First one, uh, the EA or EIS, as mentioned, there was no requirement for this project to conduct one. It did not trigger the need for an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement. Uh, regarding the AIS, it was done when they came in with the original SMA permit. And it was, um, reviewed by Shipti or State Historic Preservation Division. And they issued, uh, a findings that there will be no effect on archaeological properties. What normally happens with the planning department, we've met with them for years. Uh, because sometimes what will happen is applicants will go ahead and do a study and submit it. And then we find out later that Shipti says, we didn't ask for that study. And it's almost like you're giving us more work when we didn't need more work. So the current process that's been put in place is what is called Hi-Cris. And it's an online submittal that the government agency submits the application to the State Historic Preservation Division. There is a date stamp when we submit it. The reason why they did that is there is a state law that says they have to respond within a particular time or they have no comments. And so we did that with this application. And as mentioned previously from our staff member, that normally if they don't have any comments, they will let the time run out. In this particular case, we received no comments from them. Had they wanted an updated archaeological inventory survey, they would have submitted comments asking for that.
Thank you, Director Darrow. So you had mentioned that a environmental assessment was not, uh, triggered. Could you elaborate more on what those different items are that would, uh, that are assessed to determine whether an environmental assessment is necessary?
This is found under Hawaii Revised Statutes, chapter three, four, three dash five. There are nine triggers. The one that normally triggers is use of county or state lands or funds. There is the use of conservation land. Uh, there is the use of land within the shoreline setback area. Uh, as Mr. Pippin had mentioned, they wanted a amendment to the condition that, um, if by any chance they wanted to do something in the shoreline later, they would come in for a shoreline setback variance. That would be one of the triggers for an environmental assessment. Uh, there is, uh, wastewater triggers when you're not connected to a sewer. If you do a project that's over fifty units or more, it's one of the triggers. And there are a number of other triggers, but again, nothing in the list, uh, triggered on this particular project.
So you listed five of them. Um, the other four were just to make it clear for everyone listening, it was not triggered.
We'll get to that real quickly here. Okay, trigger number one, propose any, the use of state or county lands or the use of state or county funds, other than funds to be used for feasibility or planning studies and so on and so forth. Uh, number two, propose any use within any land class classified as a conservation district by the State Land Use Commission. Number three, propose any use within the shoreline area as defined in section two oh five A dash forty-one. Number four, propose any use within any historic site as designated in the National Register or the Hawaii Register as provided in the Historic Preservation Act of nineteen ninety-six, Public Law District. Number six, propose any amendments to existing county general plans where the amendment would result in designation other than agriculture, conservation, or preservation. Except actions proposing any new county general plan or amendment to any county general plan initiated by a county. Number seven, propose any classification of any land classified as conservation district by the State Land Use Commission under chapter two oh five. Number eight, propose the construction of new or the expansion or modification of existing helicopter facilities within the state. Uh, and then it has certain, uh, connections to that. And number nine, propose any wastewater treatment unit except an individual wastewater system or a wastewater treatment unit serving fewer than fifty single-family dwellings or the equivalent. B, waste-to-energy facility. C, landfill. E, uh, D, oil refinery. E, uh, power generating facility.
Thank you, Director Darrow. So it's clear with your reading of what triggers the need for an environmental assessment that this project does not, uh, trigger any of those. Um, but the community still has concerns. Is there a way that we could address those concerns? Oh, and, and I open this up to Mr. Pippin, Mr. Pippin and Mr. Israelson. Is there something that we could look at to address some of these concerns?
Thank you, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa. Um, there is already a protective condition in the proposed conditions from the planning department. Um, number nineteen, this is with respect to archaeological cultural remains. And it's a standard condition in the unlikely event that surface or subsurface historic resources, including human skeletal, skeletal remains, structural remains like rock walls, terraces, platforms, et cetera, cultural deposits, marine shell concentrations, sand deposits or sinkholes are identified during the demolition and/or construction work. The applicant shall cease work in the immediate vicinity of the find and protect the find from additional disturbance and contact the State Historic Preservation Division. And subsequent work shall only proceed upon an archaeological clearance from DLNR, Shipti, when it finds that sufficient mitigation measures have been taken. This is kind of the blanket protection that, you know, even though a property may have had an AIS, even a very recent AIS, there could be undiscovered undocumented subsurface remains that if they are uncovered during the, uh, earthwork or construction process, they would need to be protected under this condition.
Thank you, Mr. Pippin. Um, and then in regards to the, uh, questions about the shoreline and uh, impacts, uh, from, of any projects actually along the shoreline. Um, it seems the BMPs that are listed as the conditions in this question for Director Darrow seems that the conditions will cover those issues? Is that, is that how you look at it?
Uh, as mentioned previously, we, uh, are only looking at SMA protection for the BMPs in relation to the SMA permit. But overall for construction BMPs, those are also included that are overseen through different agencies such as Public Works and the Department of Health. Uh, but we, uh, are concerned about the protection of the shoreline. So we make sure that they put a barrier between the forty-foot shoreline area and any construction. So no activity is happening in the shoreline area.
So it sounds pretty comprehensive. When I read through the different agencies that are listed under these conditions and what the applicant will have to do to comply with the, the, um, regulations that are under the purview of these different agencies.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Chair.
Go ahead, Director Darrow.
Thank you. I just wanted to, uh, briefly touch upon, uh, a subject that has been coming up. Commonly through our SMA permit process, and that is the issue of water. Uh, regardless of what type of permit it is, uh, the planning department relies on the comments from the Department of Water Supply to understand whether or not that project has sufficient water for that particular project. This particular comment letter that is coming in is a typical comment letter that informs us this project has sufficient water for the project that can be supplied from the Department of Water Supply. The Department of Water Supply does not oversee all water around the entire island. Their systems are very minimal. They only take care of, uh, a few areas around the island. A majority of the island does not have water supplied by the County of Water, uh, supply. They, um, when they receive a request, they are looking specifically at the water units allocated for this particular project and property. So they're not looking at overall the area or everything. They're looking, do we have sufficient water for this particular project, for this property? Because they, they actually assign water commitments to properties. And in this particular case, they mentioned, I mean, they state that they have no objections to the application that they have water available, but they go further. And this is the area that they talk about, uh, that Commissioner Rodriguez was concerned about. They're now asking in their demand letters that when they do their calculations, that they consider these preservation types of options as well. Like if you can put a catchment system to be able to utilize for, uh, for landscaping, and if you could consider this type of landscaping that uses less water. So they're, they're really trying to make an effort to preserve the water, even, uh, given the fact that they do have water for this project. The typical process is the applicant submits The typical process is the applicant submits the water calculations after a project has received approval. The initial review informs us they do have the water. And so that's this particular comment letter. The next step is if it's approved, the applicant will submit the estimated daily usage calculations to Water Supply. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Darrell, for the clarification. Mr. Pippin, would you like to add today really quickly?
Thank you for the opportunity, Chair Earl. The application on page thirty-seven, section on water and availability of utilities also details voluntary best management practices proposed by this project, the applicant, including irrigation best management practices, native landscaping, ziriscaping, rain sensors on the irrigation system, et cetera, and so forth. So we're really trying to be proactive and use water wisely and conserve it to the to the greatest extent possible.
Thank you, Mr. Pippin. Commissioner Rodriguez?
You know, my question is to the building director. Has it always been done this way? It just seems kind of weird to me that, you know, like, there's, you know, that it should be presented to us so we can make a decision, you know, because you know, I know we, you know, we elected the building department and the water department, but these resources, they belong to our community also. So it'd be nice if we had like specifics, you know, like more specific plans like on a pools and and, you know, maybe have a in your plans that, you know, where you are putting a catchment, not just wishful, you know, I might do this or you know, it's just wishful thinking, but, you know, it's like giving somebody a gun and saying, I'm gonna give you the bullets later, you know. It just doesn't make sense to me, you know. And I'm sorry, you know, that, you know, if I had more information, I could probably make a better decision, you know.
Commissioner Rodriguez, I really don't understand what you're trying to get at. The applicant submitted an application to us, a very specific application for a specific project. The Planning Department sends that application to the Department of Water Supply. They review it regarding all activities that are being proposed in that application. And they will comment back to us saying whether or not they can supply the necessary water or not. In this particular case, they did submit a comment letter saying they have sufficient water for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for the question and clarification. Any other commissioners, any more discussion points? I believe the motion on the floor is to approve the SMA. It was, the motion was made by Vice Chair Naborekawa and seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Any further discussions on the motion, Vice Chair Naborekawa?
I just wanted to make sure that my amendment or my motion was to approve along with that amendment to condition number twelve. Just wanted to clarify.
Yes, yes. So that was the requested amendment to number twelve. Yes, the request is by the applicant for condition number twelve. So we do have the motion on the floor. Are we going to go ahead and vote on that motion or any more discussions? Okay, Commissioner Inaba?
Aloha. I just want to make sure that I'm doing this right as a newbie.
Yeah, just take your time.
Aman amend the main motion.
Okay, so could you state your amendment? And then I'll ask the maker of the motion and the second of the motion if they're okay with that amendment.
All right. So I move to amend the main motion by adding requirements for additional parking spaces to support shoreline access. The three of the requests that I would have with regards to this is adding a minimum of three additional parking stalls exclusively for shoreline access, looking at Maoko of the development where are feasible. And this would bring the number of public stalls to six. And number two, clearly identifying and with signage all shoreline parking stalls to avoid confusion with residential or guest stalls. And three, ensuring long-term public use of these stalls through appropriate documentation, signage, and enforcement measures.
Okay, so the motion to amend was by Commissioner Inaba. Is there a second for that motion, for that amended motion?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Ayers has seconded it. Discussion and the maker of the amendment, Commissioner Inaba, can you explain your reasoning for adding in more parking stalls or beach access?
Yes, thank you. I just feel that the three stalls that are being presented to us here aren't quite enough. I believe that just three will limit access to the shoreline. And it's insufficient for this highly trafficked and recreational area in this coastal area where many local people and visitors rely upon as far as being able to get that get that access. It's the building of this property, the building of this condominium is going to restrict it. And so I just want to make sure that we do have more access to the shoreline.
Applicant Mr. Pippin, are you okay with this amendment?
Thank you, Chair Earl. I have a question relating to the amendment, whether it would be acceptable to have these spots available for both the public shoreline access, these additional three spaces, and visitors to the condominium project? Or whether you're only looking for those dedicated to the public shoreline access?
At this time, I'm just looking at it being dedicated for public usage.
Yep, so that's that's what I heard. And if you can discuss, if you need, do you need time to discuss with your applicant, with your client?
We might need a few minutes. Sorry. There's there's quite a bit of background here with respect to the easements that have already been established for that parking area and the public access agreement that is referenced and on file with the Planning Department. So I'm assuming your your third point to the motion would be to re-enter, have all that updated. So, yeah, if we could just have a few minutes to.
Okay, yeah, so go ahead in a few minutes with your client, and we can further discuss this with the commission. I support it. I support adding in more parking stalls. You know, it is a sizable development. And at the very least, we can give the community more parking access. I don't know how other commissioners feel about that, but thank you, Commissioner Inaba, for bringing that amendment up. Director Darrell, would you like to address the request for more parking stalls?
Thank you, Chair Earl. Completely in favor. Thank you for bringing forth that amendment. We would need to amend condition, I believe it's we'll need to look at it, the condition relative to the grant of easements. And what we'll do is, at the end of that condition, we can state that the grant of easements will be amended to reflect six parking stalls and signage so that it's inclusive of that particular public access condition. Right now, the grant of easement that's established has the Maoko Makai lateral in the public access parking for three stalls. So we would want to amend that.
So would that be condition number five?
I believe so. Yeah.
Mr. Pippin?
Yeah, thank you for the moment to confer. We are in agreement. We appreciate the suggestion by Commissioner Inaba. We would accept such an amendment to increase three additional shoreline access dedicated parking spaces. Just so long as we get it clear in the conditions that that it's all updated and reflected such that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pippin. So we do have two motions on the floor. One motion is for the added amendment for the beach access parking stalls. And the other, the first motion, the main motion we have is by Vice Chair Naborekawa. So just wanted to explain to the commissioners what you have. The second in the motion, would you like to make a comment? Commissioner Ayers, since you already, since you made the second, would you like to comment on it? And any other comments from commissioners?
I think after hearing the testimony from the public in the community today, it is very important that although we appreciate that you're going to improve access, we want it to be able to be what it's intended for, which is not just the owners and or occupants of the units, but the public itself.
Thank you. Okay, I do see some lights on. Did you guys want to make comments first? Or should we just go ahead and Vice Chair Naborekawa?
So I am totally in favor of Commissioner Inaba's amendment to add those additional spaces.
Okay, Commissioner Inaba, your light is on, so I'm not sure if you wanted to make a. All right, well, let's let's call for, let's call for the question if there's no more discussion.
Chair, I just need some clarification. This is to amend the original motion. We want to add three additional parking stalls dedicated to public shoreline access. There was a concern about signage, but that is already a significant part of the original agreement. That signage is required, not only for the parking, but for the actual access pathway. So I'm not sure if they want additional signage or just to ensure that.
I believe Commissioner Inaba's intentions were to have the parking stalls strictly dedicated to the public. And if there's sufficient signage already in the language that is required, then I is that would that be okay, Commissioner Inaba?
Yeah, I believe so. Okay, so nothing additional from the original. But yes, the parking stalls will be clearly designated with signs, the pathway, even on the road, it'll say shoreline access. And then all along that, so I just want to make sure that's clear. Okay.
Yes.
And then also that they'll need to update the public access plan that was agreed to under the previous SMA.
Yes, and yeah, that would be condition number five.
Okay. So this is the motion to amend the original motion. Commissioner Inaba?
Yes.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kanuha?
Aye.
Commissioner Naborekawa?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chair Earl?
Aye.
Motion carries with six and one excused.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. So I believe we're gonna take a roll call on our main motion. And the main motion is to approve the SMA with condition number twelve, with amendments to condition number twelve. Vice Chair Naborekawa motioned and Commissioner Inaba seconded. So if there's no further discussion, let's call for the vote.
Okay, this is the original motion to approve with the amendment to condition number twelve. Commissioner Naborekawa?
Aye.
Commissioner Inaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Kanuha?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No.
And Chair Earl?
Aye.
Motion carries with five votes, one no, and one excused.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. So we'll go right into item number two. I believe I already stated what item number two is. And just for the commissioners, it is to revoke SMA permit four three seven. And I'm ready to entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Kanuha?
Well, I move to make a motion that special management area SMA use permit document number PL dash SMA four three seven be revoked based on the planning director's recommendation, which shall be adopted.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconding by Vice Chairman, Vice Chair Naborekawa. Motion was made by Commissioner Kanuha. Any discussions on the revocation of SMA permit? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Commissioner Kanuha?
Aye.
Commissioner Naborekawa? Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Inaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chair Earl?
Aye.
Motion carries with six votes and one excused.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Thank you, Mr. Pippin. You'll be notified in writing. Thank you. So let's just go right into item number three. And item number three is applicant David Ebinal, PLA SMA twenty two twenty twenty-five zero 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 seven six. Application for special management area use permit to construct two store to construct a two-story, four thousand nine hundred forty-two square foot, single-family residence that includes four bedrooms, four and a half bathrooms, two single-car garages, a lanai, a twelve-foot by twenty-two-foot spa, and related improvements on a point three four five acre shoreline parcel with a special management area. This project is located within the Lanihau Point subdivision of Kona Bay Estates at seven five dash five four three six Kona Bay Drive, approximately point seven miles from intersection Kona Bay Drive and Kuakini Highway, Kailua Airport, North Kona, Hawaii, TMK three seven five zero zero five zero nine four. Staff presentation, Mr. Roy?
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is for special management area use permit application, PL SMA twenty twenty-five zero 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 seven six. Here's a location map of the proposed project. This is a subdivision that is on Makai side of the old Kona Airport, just north of Kailua Kona proper. At this time, the applicant is requesting to construct a single-family dwelling, which is a two-story residence with four thousand nine hundred and forty-two square feet of total developed area. The interior will be four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven square feet with an exterior space of four hundred and seventy-five square feet. The residence will include four bedrooms, four and a half baths, two separate single-car garages, lanai, and a twelve-by-twenty-two-foot spa. The entire development has existing utility infrastructure that includes water, sewage, electricity, and telecommunications. It's already available to the site and the entire development in this area. Here's a map of the county zoning for that subdivision. You can see the subdivision is within the RS fifteen, or single-family residential, fifteen thousand square feet. Surrounding that, which is really the park and airport, is still within the limited industrial zoning designation. State land use in this entire area is urban. And the Lupe or general plan map for this entire area is open. There's a small little sliver of industrial that includes portions of the old Kona Airport. Here's an aerial photograph of the subject property. You can see that it's undeveloped. Uh you can see that it's uh undeveloped and had been cleared. Uh this subdivision, if you don't know, uh was constructed some time ago. And most of the property, uh most of the sub, the the parcels have been cleared completely. Uh and they included uh small construction, like the construction of the shoreline wall. And I'll speak more to that. Here's another view. Excuse me. There's another view aerial show to show the entire subdivision. Uh the subject property is here with the red asterisks. Uh we recently, uh the planning commission here recently approved uh development for this parcel. So this represents one of the last remaining open parcels in this subdivision. Uh you can also see, of course, the park, uh the old Kona Airport, arc, uh and uh just Malka of the subdivision. Um as when they do submit, I'd like to show that they got a shoreline certification. So they submitted and it was approved by the Borderland and Natural Resources. So that helps set distinctly the forty-foot shoreline setback area for the proposed project. Um in this area, I also like to add a map that shows the shoreline access for the public. In this area, you have uh off to the left is the park, so there's full access. Uh right there, there's an access pathway uh through the development from the Malka lands. And then another access pathway through the development from the Malka lands to the shoreline. The long red line here along the shoreline is the shoreline access wall. And it's a two, three-foot wide uh wall that traverses the entire subdivision that is fully uh open for public access along the shoreline. Um additionally, uh because this area is rocky and uh has small pocket beaches, there is significant access ease of access along this entire shoreline, even Makai of that wall. Here's a site plan uh showing the outline of the new building. There's some paving, the pool, and I also marked the forty-foot shoreline setback line. And then here is that public access pathway or wall that goes through the subject property and traverses both north and south along this area. Here's a very uh typical site photo of this project sites. Uh you can see that it's, there's no, no vegetation. They're typically very cleared. There's uh the rocky soil. There's very little soil development, and so very little vegetation grows. But you can see that it's very open. Uh and then here, right here at the bottom of the picture, is that shoreline access wall. Here is kind of looking south along the subdivision. On the left, we see that shoreline access wall. And then here, like I spoke to, you can see that there's significant land, pocket beaches, rock uh that that uh allows people to traverse the shoreline. Uh so they have a couple of choices. They can either use the wall or uh they can just walk along the shore. It's it's pretty open. Uh here's access. Uh the road to the subdivision is private. It's gated. Um so I just showed the view of Kona Bay Drive uh at the intersection of Kuakini Highway. So this is looking north. So this is the intersection. They would have to turn left uh from this point to get down to uh the Kona Bay Estates. And then additionally, I kind of add, so from that, they would drive down to Kona Bay Estates. There's the gate, and then they would enter the uh subdivision. So any uh ingress or egresses all through Kona Bay Drive to Kuakini Highway. At this time, the director's recommenda- recommendation is approval of PL SMA twenty twenty five zero 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 seven six with the stated conditions provided. I could take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Uh fellow commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? None? Okay, can I please have the applicant come? Okay. How about we take a five-minute bathroom break, but you guys are welcome to come and sit down. Just a a really quick bathroom break. Thank you. Okay, so let's bring this meeting back to order. Leeward Planning Commission, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The time is twelve thirty-five. Are we, are we okay? Kelsey, Maya, okay, we're on YouTube and all right. Uh so um applicant, um uh can you please raise your right hand and I'll swear again? Do you swear to tell the truth in front of the Leeward Planning Commission today?
I do.
Okay, um what I want you to do is uh before you speak, please state your name and where you reside, and have you received the background um and recommendation from the planning director?
My name is Helena Nicholson. I'm from Kailua Kona, and yes, we received the background report and the recommendation.
And are you okay with the proposed recommendations?
Yes, we are. Sorry?
Okay, uh sorry, go ahead.
We are in agreement with um the planning department recommendation and all the conditions stipulated within it.
Okay, uh if you can go ahead with your presentation.
We don't have a presentation at this time. Uh we we don't have a presentation at this time.
Would you please state your name?
My name is Winton Nicholson. Uh I live in Kailua Kona.
Uh okay, well, um the fellow commissioners, do you have any questions for uh Mr. and Mrs. uh um Nicholson? None? Okay, well, from what I understand, this is the last uh vacant lot in that subdivision that's that's gonna be built, and I believe we did approve one.
There are four vacant lots left in the subdivision. Forty lots total, thirty-six are developed.
Okay, I do have a question. Um how how soon do you intend to uh start building?
As soon as permits are submitted and approved by the county boy.
Okay. Uh Vice Chair Nobori Kawa?
Thank you, Chair Al. Uh so we heard some testimony in this, about this area and um different types of um indigenous practices here. During any time uh was the current uh with this current proposal, or if you have any information for previous proposals uh for the subdivision specifically, were lineal descendants included in discussions on what would happen on this property?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Um and Mr. Roy, the background information talked about a lot of ivy kupuna showing up after storms and other types of things. Were they at this end of the subdivision or the other end of the subdivision? Are you aware of where those were?
That's really the park area. You have to understand that the the parcel, the land that the the development's gonna occur on is is rock. So there really wouldn't be uh anything.
Okay, so no.
At the the dune system in the park area, that's to the north, that's that's typically, or along the shoreline in the sandy areas is where you would have found that. That that um but this development was created long ago, completely grazed, but it's it's essentially hard pack rock, a very rocky soil. Um so what I've found over a numerous, and in fact, this commission has reviewed numerous uh uh developments in that area, is that the soil in, on the parcels really wouldn't support any subsurface because it's kind of uh rocky and or bedrocky. Um but that most of that, uh ivy kupuna and other cultural artifacts would have been in the northern undeveloped section kind of of the park and and along the shoreline. Yeah.
Okay, so the um condition that we have, which unfortunately I don't have in front of me, but there are standard condition
Yes.
about archaeological artifacts um would pretty much cover everything, and there would be no need for an onsite archaeologist force uh during times of ground disturbance, since there's really nothing that could be a
Well, they can confirm because they actually did a study, which is, which is, wasn't required, but they went ahead and did some additional work, so I just want to talk about that.
Yeah, we had an archaeological um survey and a cultural analysis that was completed on January twelfth, and the report was submitted on February twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five. They didn't find that any cultural or archaeological resources will be affected during or after the construction of the proposed development.
I apologize. I did have it here in my notes. I was just, just kind of glossed over it. Thank you very much.
Oh, and then uh also Shifty did not respond uh to the six E request, unfortunately.
Uh is, do we have any public testimony, Ms. Jackson or Ms. Camaro?
Chair, we do not have any in-person testifiers.
And Chair, we do not have any Zoom testifiers.
All right, if we don't have any further questions for the applicant or staff, thank you very much, and I will, ready to entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Uh um I move that application for special management area SMA use permit docket number PL dash SMA dash Uh, um, I move that application for special management area SMA use permit docket number PL dash SMA dash twenty twenty-five dash zero 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 seven six be approved based on the planning director's recommendations, which shall be adopted.
Motion by Commissioner Kanuha. Can I get a second, please?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Inaba. Any discussions? Well, call for the question.
Sorry, roll call? Is there?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, call for the question. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Kanuha?
Aye.
Commissioner Inaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Ayers?
Yes.
Commissioner Nobori Kawa?
Aye.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Chair Al?
Aye.
Motion carries with six votes and one excused.
Thank you, Mister Roy. Um, thank you, Mister, Mister Nicholson. You will be noticed. Uh, you being, will be notified email. Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have any announcements or, yes, do we have any announcements?
Chair, I have a couple of announcements for you. Um, we currently have no items on your, um, June agenda, so, um, I know Vice Chair Nobori Kawa had requested that the discussion on Olelo um, that we had, I think, two months ago, uh, be deferred to the June meeting, and since we'd like to cancel that meeting, we would defer that discussion to July, if that's okay.
I'm, I am okay with that.
Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, we'll go ahead and cancel the June Leeward Planning Commission meeting. And then I have one more announcement. Um, the state legislature, uh, just wrapped up their session. They did, um, adopt a bill, House Bill seven thirty-two. Um, and if that is signed by the governor, it will increase the valuation of develop, of development, um, that determines the necessity for an SMA permit. Currently, the valuation is half a million dollars, and it would increase the valuation to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if that's signed by the governor, the commission may see fewer SMA major permit applications.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Um, can we, do we have a planning director's report?
Yes, the, the SMA report for April twenty twenty-five should have been emailed out to you. It's also available in your, in your folders, in your Chromebook, and so I can answer any questions you have about that log.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Jackson from Commissioners? Okay, well, just again, I wanted to welcome our two new Commissioners. You did a great job today, Commissioner Inaba and Commissioner Ayers. Welcome, welcome to our team. Uh, thank you, everybody, for your time and commitment, and you have a nice day. Um, can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion to adjourn, Vice Chair Nobori Kawa, seconded by Commissioner Kanuha. If you're all in favor, indicated so, say aye.
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 Thank you, everybody. Mahalo. Have a good day.
The closed captions transcript will be terminated shortly, and those who wish to save the transcript should do so now.